Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all. Thank you. Now that Vida has put 3.0 on for comments from the chair, I don't have any, so we're gonna move. We're gonna move right to 4.0 minutes. So I'd like to... Do you have minutes from the meeting on February 25th? Do I have a motion to approve? Boo boo, approval?
Second.
Second? Okay, any corrections, amendments, additions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Any, all in favor? Any opposed? Thanks. Adjustments to the agenda? We have a couple. I think, well, first, I'd just like to point out for people who in the audience, there are copies of the budget back on the table in the rear, so if you haven't had a chance to pick one up, if you could. And as far as adjustments go, Vida had distributed, naturally got by email, and then Vida distributed a hard copy of the proposal for the musical theater performance semester course. And I would like to make that under new business, item 12.7. And I hope that'll be an action item. And one other adjustment, if we could, again, under new business, if we could move, item 12.5, the school calendar, if we could move that up and make it 8.25 under Katie's presentation on curriculum assessment and instruction update. So if we could take the calendar up under committee reports, and again, that'll be an action item. Any other adjustments? Patrick? Thanks. Okay, so we have our item 6.0, our first public session. If there's anyone in the public, in the audience, that has a comment or wishes to make a comment on something, on an item that's on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. If not, thank you. 7.0, staff report.
So it's our pleasure to have the Unified Basketball team, some members of the team here, and Charlie and Becky are here to do a presentation, and it's really been, and Nate Priest is here who helped start the program. It's been a highlight of the district. It's really gone well for us, and the students have had great success. And it's just great to be able to watch them compete and just watch all the students that are involved. And so a special thank you to Charlie and Becky for coaching and for Nate for organizing all the games and the travel and everything else, and for the students that help with this program. So Charlie and Becky, come on up. Have you introduced the students? And you have a quick video for us and then kind of some presentation? Okay, great.
Whatever works for you.
Unified basketball brings an athlete
Like me.
Together with a partner
Like me.
To compete on the court at the same time. Unified basketball brings together students with and without intellectual disabilities. It takes them off the sidelines and onto the court. They have the heart, courage, and strength to help take down prejudices surrounding intellectual disabilities. Students with disabilities do not often get a chance to play on their high school sports teams. Unified basketball enables them to do that.
Unified athletes are just like me. They're competitive and wanna win.
Best thing about Unified Basketball was the opportunity to help those struggling to learn.
What is your favorite part about Unified Basketball?
My favorite part about Unified Basketball is the team effort.
Making it fair.
When I make the basket, everyone cheers to us.
Getting those players as people and not their disabilities is really a huge perspective shift for me.
What I like about Unified Basketball was this major teamwork around the court. And it was really good how we were all cooperating really well. And I like that.
My favorite part about Unified Basketball is the competitive spirit, but it's combined with caring for all of the players and just the overall empathy towards everybody and willingness to help out anybody.
Rogue, she's our AV guru there, so she's unbelievable with those videos. And tonight, we have May Winglass, Emily Blandier, Michael Lazar, Marta Lazar, Emma, Lorna, and we've got Louis Ostar out, and we have Mr. Priest in the back. And those are our players, and a couple of those guys have been with us for two years since we started this program. And it's been, really been a great program for all of us. And I think it's, we really have changed the culture. You've seen it in our school, you've seen it in our community. They ask our players how many points they scored. They sit with them at lunch, when sometimes they haven't always been. They'll walk with them to class, where they're now in a music class that they didn't always used to be in. It has changed our school for the better and our community. You get emails all the time from community manager Kim Gates donating money to our program, other adults donating money to our program. It's really been unbelievable to see how our community has rallied around us for this program. And I've been here for, this is my 19th year, and I have never seen anything in education that is quite like this and has changed the culture of our school and our community as quickly as this has. It's taken off, it's unbelievable. And that speaks loudly to our kids and to our coach.
Yeah, I'd just add one other thing. I think, you know, between Mr. Bingham and I, we've had plenty of opportunities to coach multiple teams in our career. And this, I don't wanna speak for you, but this by far is the best thing that we've done, and it's very rewarding. Do any of you wanna come and speak?
Yeah, any of the stu-, yeah. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Emma, I'm a senior. Before Unified Basketball, I never saw like Michael live, but now I go down to Life Skills, and me and Michael go on walks often. I'm now in, I have a guitar class, and now I have everyone in there, and it's cool to interact with them who I've never seen before, and they're so fun to joke around with. It's a good program.
I've been in this program for two years, along with May and Michael. And just, for these kids, they haven't gotten this opportunity before to, you know, show their athletic ability, to make new friends, to open up. And now they can. So I think it's just amazing that everyone's making new friends. They're, you know, they're very excited for the games. They love to play, and we all enjoy it, we all have a great time. And it's, I think it's one of the most positive things that we could've, you know, done, so.
You guys are all too shy, that's the problem.
I just wanted to kind of speak to what Mr. Bingham said about changing the community and the culture. We've had a lot of opportunities. We had a game where we played the Bath Police Department. We had, to end our winter carnival week, we had a game versus the teachers. And that is in the same place, the pit, as our spirit week. And it was just as loud, if not louder, during the pep rally in that game. So to have that encouragement, to have that just support and power from our school was so, so great. And I think it totally has changed the way that we interact and the way that our school kind of works, which is super cool. And I think that's one of the greatest things about it.
Hello, everyone. I would just like to read this quote by Dr. Jerome Lejeune. He's a geneticist, a doctor, and he discovered what causes Down Syndrome, trisomy 21. He said, "The quality of a civilization can be measured by the respect it has for its weakest members." And I think this is it. It was the most amazing thing for me as a mother to see these kids doing what they did, to see Michael giving and all the other kids, they give. And being around them, as a mom, I can say, it's therapy. It's really good for me. And thank you very much."
There's never a dull moment at these games. I really highly suggest try to go to one, 'cause there's always smiles. Both teams are always having fun the whole time. It's a really great program.
Just a couple things. It's really fun when you get to watch Lucas and Michael do YMCA 2 at halftime, so it's a lot of fun to see that as well. One thing I, when I was a kid, I loved to play sports, and I always dreamed about playing sports. And for a lot of these kids, they've never been able to do that. And this is the first time in their lives, in their family lives, that they get to do something that they could only dream of. And we're letting their dreams become a reality. And I don't think that's an overstatement, because I had Michael in class a couple times, and he's always wanted to play basketball, and this has been really great for him. So it's a learning experience he would've never got to have, 'cause we always say athletics is such a great learning experience. This is truly a learning experience. Whether we're on the, in the locker room, whether we're on the bus, 'cause the bus is where a lot of fun stuff happens, and when we're on the court. And I just can't say enough about it. And it really is about the people, because it takes a special person for, to come out and play this game when you're not really sure what Unified Basketball is all about. And you would ask some of the people coming to a game, or even the officials sometimes, "What do I do here? What is this all about?" And sometimes they just think it's coed. They don't really have a knowledge of what Unified Basketball is. So this is really groundbreaking for, I know, for our state, but really for our community and the RSU. And we thank you for giving us that privilege. And it has been a privilege. Thank you.
Thanks. I think we owe you a round of applause. And the team, I mean, you've given us another winning tradition at Morse. So I think the benefit for the kids that participate, for the community, for the parents. But it is also an incredible opportunity, I think, for us as the RSU community, RSU One community, to show the, to show the public, the general public, what Morse and what the RSU is all about in terms of, in terms of how we deal with our students and our kids. So it's fabulous.
Thank you.
I just, I do have just one question. Is basketball the only unified sport that's provided in the state, you know?
Currently, yeah, currently, it is basketball. They are trying to, the MPA is trying to get volleyball together. And this past season, it's a fall season. And this past season, there was only one school that was involved in that. So it really hasn't generated any, too much interest yet, but I think it's something that's coming down, down the pipeline. They've also talked about soccer, but they're looking at starting with volleyball.
How many basketball, how many schools are involved?
There are 56 schools in the state of Maine that are involved.
That's great. And we are, you know, I've read about the team's performance in the final game. And, you know, we're very proud of what those, of what the kids provide on the court and certainly very proud of your effort as mentors of that team, so.
Thank you.
And I would just say, Maine basketball can be very passionate, as you know. And going to any one of these games puts it in perspective. It really does. And it's not about the wins and losses, and it's great. And so thank you for that. Thank you to the MPA. Often, the Maine Principals Association gets criticism because of their ticket prices. But this is something that they've started statewide, and I hope it will, you know, other sports will, you know, come through and come to fruition. And I also would say that our Special Olympians are also very lucky and fortunate to have staff, including Charlie and Becky, at Morse, that, you know, our athletes get other opportunities throughout the winter and the spring to do other activities as well. Not all schools, you know, have that opportunity, so thank you for that.
Just to put a plug in for that, sorry, but we're trying to host the spring, summer, or spring Olympics, Special Olympics at McMahon Field. So we're trying to do that and get some community servants and more people involved, because we do have such a great facility. So we're trying to do that on May 10th with the help of Nate Priest and some community members as well. And so hopefully, we'll get that to come here as well. And I think that's gonna be a great opportunity, not only for athletes, but our community too. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions, other questions for Nate or Becky or the kids? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. And like I said, we're all very proud of your efforts on the court and off the court, so. Okay, item 8, 8.0, we're gonna do committee reports. So 8.1, the building project update, Patrick.
Yeah, a quick update. The mechanical bid came back. I let the board know this, but, well, first of all, the public, I think we've talked about this, but Harvey Construction will be the general contractor for the new high school and CTE Center. And the mechanical bid did come in significantly lower the second time around, which is positive news. And we go up on April 3rd to meet with the Department of Education to try to finalize, to have a final number for the overall budget. And then in May, we're still scheduled to go out to bond the project, the whole 75, roughly, 75 million. We have established a color committee slash design committee, because we're starting to get to the interior. We have some staff going down to Boston this week to a furniture show. So again, it's starting to get a little exciting. We're gonna start to look at the types of furniture that we want in the new building, the type of color, and also what we will bring from the old school to the new school. So it's starting to ramp up with different committees. And the percent for art committee, which is funded by the state, allows us to have a couple, well, maybe one, or it could be two or three different forms of art throughout the building. So that will be starting soon as well. So April 1st is when Harvey will move in their new trailer, and soon after that, they'll start pouring concrete.
Thanks, Patrick. If you could just remind me, the mechanical bid came in less than the original, but I can't remember what the original, I mean, are we still above our?
Yeah, I mean, it came in 1.8 less, 1.8 million less the second time around, but we still, you know, are over budget a little bit, and that's what we'll discuss, you know, on April 3rd with the Department of Education, but nowhere near what we were before. So I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but.
Thanks. Any questions, Patrick? The building project?
Well, thank you for moving Katie up. She's not feeling very well, so we'd like to get her out of here as soon as possible. So thanks for including the calendar in her presentation.
Hello? It's working. Okay, so I have a few quick updates, two of which are items that are also on the agenda of the calendar and the advisory committee proposal. The first is usually around this time of year, we talk about the Title I, Title II, and Title IV funding that's coming in. And I give you an update on our plans for those expenditures for next year. I did call the state last week, and they're still waiting on those numbers. And so essentially, they said that they'd be flat for Maine or slightly lower. And myself and Sandra Gorsuch, who's in charge, who's our Title I coordinator, have been planning for a 5% decrease, hoping that it won't happen. But I just wanted to let you know that I'll have, hopefully, more information for you next time. So the delay isn't because of us. I think it's the federal government that's a little behind. Okay. One exciting development is, you know, the administrative team here, I've been told before I arrived, was looking a lot at how to increase attendance numbers for students in our buildings. And a parent actually reached out to me who had contact with a consultant who works for Count Me In Maine, which does a lot of work with helping schools, consulting with schools to increase student attendance and sort of promote creative ways to make sure we're getting all students to school. And so it's exciting that we're going to move forward with two of our schools piloting this work, with Susan Lieberman next year. Fisher Mitchell and Woolwich are the two schools who decided to do the pilot. And so I'll have more updates for you on that next year. The cost for both schools is fairly minimal in terms of what consultants generally charge, but the benefits will be great. And what it requires is us sharing a lot of our data in advance and doing some staff surveys. And then, as I've explained before, our principals all have a school goal that they choose to focus on every year for the building. And so Fisher Mitchell and Woolwich will have attendance as one of theirs and have a team that focuses on that and sort of see if we can think outside the box of how to increase our numbers. So I just wanted to tell the board about that. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Katie?
Okay. So why don't we then, those were my two quick updates. I just wanted to quickly go over a couple of things for the calendar before you take action on it. Just so you know, I'm sure you remember, those of you in the past who have done this before, we're allowed to have five dissimilar days between ourselves and the other schools who attend our vocational school. So that would be obviously RSU One, Boothby, Wisconsin, and Lincoln. Right now, with the current calendar and what they've all decided, we're at four dissimilar days, so we're within the range that's okay as per the Department of Education. And basically, that just means we wanna maximize the number of days all the kids from all the sending schools are together. And so we wanna make sure our calendars are as aligned as possible. So we were able to work it out. The one sort of big difference you'll see between this calendar and last year's calendar is that we will be starting after Labor Day, which I've been told hasn't happened for a very long time here.
Happy about that.
Labor Day is really early, and so as you can see from the calendar, the final week in August, when we do start, we'll have new staff orientation, two teacher professional development days, no, no, no work for teachers on the Friday, and then we see students for the first time on the Tuesday following Labor Day. So that's kind of the biggest shift, and it really only pushes us back by two days as we usually start the prior Thursday and Friday. In terms of the other school vacations that we usually take, those all fall in the normal December week, February, third week in February, third week in April. So in my conversations, after I speak with all the districts who go to our vocational school, I also meet with the Teachers Association. And so they've looked all this over and edited as well. And they were fine with all of those. And then finally, I would say, we're pretty standard in keeping a March professional development day and an early October professional development day. Where things have gone back and forth before is whether to keep that fourth PD day in November or January for teachers. And the association and the administrators and I agreed that moving forward, we'd like to probably keep it in November just because we have schools that are voting sites. It kind of makes it hard to go back and forth from November one year, January one year, we have years where we have to take it off. And so we're always gonna try to put it in that voting week in November from now on, just so you all know. So it's more consistent for families for planning. Okay? I don't think there are any other big things of note other than that, unless you have questions for me.
I just wonder, how many snow days do we use this year?
Five.
Five? We used all five?
Yep, so we're at five right now, and we'll be ending on a Friday as of right now. It's pretty warm, so here's hoping that we're done.
Any questions of Katie? This is an action item, so we'll.
Yes.
We're gonna be taking a vote. So do I have a motion to approve the budget? Or excuse me? Yeah, approve the budget too. Approve the calendar. Let's get the budget number first. So we're trying to. Okay, so we have a motion by Bill, second by Lou. Any discussion? Any further, any questions of Katie? Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Nope? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So I noticed that the next time is the later start time committee, advisory committee. So I was just gonna kind of go over the proposal. Does that make sense? You need to officially move the agenda forward?
Well, you and Lou.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to start, and you can jump in, Lou?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So you all have this proposal in your packet, and it's a proposal for an advisory committee for school start time. And Lou and myself would be co-facilitating. This idea for this research project came from a few parents in the community. There are a few other schools in Maine who've looked into doing this and are either in the midst of researching, have made some changes, have researched and decided not to make some changes. So it's kind of a hot topic right now, I would say. So essentially, what this proposal outlines is not for a committee that would make a decision, but for a committee of, it's fairly diverse, that would do a lot of the research for the board and in the end, provide a presentation and a write-up for the findings that we come up with, both in favor or not of various different options that we might find. For Lou and I, it was really important that we had community members, board members, principals from both start times. So from the eight o'clock start time and the seven o'clock start time, same with teachers. And we also have a student from the high school, school, a student council, rather. And Mr. Varney is just, there's four students who are interested, and he's just finalizing who it will officially be. And so we're ready to start on April 23rd, and we thought maybe offsite at Lou's Center for Peace and Community would be best. And I'm preparing right now articles that we will all read in advance of the meeting, so we all start the conversation on the same page. And this, of course, all of these will be public meetings for anyone who's interested to attend. So it's not just a requirement, obviously, of, or an option for the people who are listed here. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, Lou?
No, I think that's good. And just, especially for Megan and Anita, you know, we're starting with this particular time once we have a meeting and can figure everything out and see if this time's gonna work. And if we can make it a little later in the afternoon for future meetings or whatever, if it works for you. So well, this isn't, you know, gonna be that all the time. We wanna make sure everyone. everyone has opportunities to attend meetings.
Yeah.
I can come to this first one.
Oh, you might be able to.
Oh, excellent, okay, good.
Good, okay.
Yeah, we were just trying to pick times that are not necessarily late at night, so it's respectful of the teachers and the student who will be attending, because it's important that we want to make sure they're there during their workday.
Yep.
So we'll have to sort of make sure it's at all different times, so depending on who you are, you can come at some point.
But no, I think this is, like Katie said, it's really an opportunity to look at all the information that's out there, and there's a whole spectrum, it's not just, you know, you either start two hours later, or you stay where you are, there's a lot of in-between, there's a lot of different slight modifications that have been made in some places that make it a little easier, so we want to look at all of it, see what, you know, fortunately, a lot of the work's been done, so it really is, you know, what might work for us, or what options might there be for us, and then, you know, we'll take it from there. But I just wanted to thank Katie for putting all this together, and I think it's going to be, you know, interesting to committee to facilitate.
Yeah, and I think the last thing I'll add is, you know, often sports is one of the main things that becomes part of this decision, and so, we are making sure that we have, I should have said this earlier, Nate, our athletic director, and Charlie, our frisite teacher, who's also very involved in sports, who was just here on the committee, so that will be good. Okay? Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Katie. Hey, well, before she goes away, any questions on late start committee proposal?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, and I think the committee will bring back periodic reports, so that the full board and the community can stay on top of it.
I'd like to hear the report on the statistics and others' experiences on moving the start time. And then you'll bring us all that.
Okay, thank you, thanks. Next committee report is 8.4, is the finance committee, and given that we're into the budget cycle, the finance committee has met three times this month. We had, and I thank those board members that were able to come to those meetings and participate in those discussions. Patrick had the administrative team give us presentations on March 4th and March 11th on the detail of, in terms of the review of individual cost centers, and I think those were both very productive meetings for us. And then, as a follow-up, the finance committee met again, I can't remember the date, but we met subsequent to the March, the March 11th meeting, as a committee to review what the superintendent's recommendations on the budget were, and made a couple of suggestions of things that we would like to see modified before it went to the first reading. And Patrick will be presenting that budget, and his recommendations under new business is item 12.2. The other thing I'd just like to do is, in the finance committee report, and I'll probably do it again, is at the end of the meeting, but to remind both the board and the community that we have a public forum on the budget next Monday, April 1st, at the, at here, right here, at the middle school, and that'll be the first opportunity that the public has, and the board has, to engage Patrick on the detail of the budget, and to tease out any questions, any issues that might arise. So I, again, I am going to count on all the board to be here, but I would encourage members of the public to come out for that first meeting. So the, just quickly, the schedule is April 1st is the public forum. At our regular board meeting on the 22nd of April, we'll have another public forum on the budget. Depending on how that public forum in April goes, first part of April, we may have a finance committee meeting in between April 1st and April 22nd. So this, April 22nd is another opportunity for the public forum, with the public forum. May 6th will be the second reading of the budget, and it's, at that meeting, we'll, the board will adopt the budget and sign warrants. The budget district meeting, or the district budget meeting is May 28th, and again, that's an up and down vote, all citizens, all community members are invited to participate in that vote. And then on June 11th is the budget validation referendum. Is that this, no, it's not the same day, it's a special election. It's the 11th, the special election happens much closer than that. So it'll be a busy, a busy time, please take a look at the budget materials you have, questions, if the questions come up outside the context of the meeting, give Deborah or Patrick a call to, to, you know, get what detail you think you need to be able to evaluate what the proposals are, and how we might go forward with it. I want to thank Lorna, Lorna Ryan's here tonight, thank you for coming, and Lorna's one of our community members of the finance committee, so. The other thing I just want to raise, and I don't, I don't think we need a vote on this, but we have been, we also met with Dick Renegan, our bond, well, not bond counsel, but the person who advises us on funding issues, and we've been talking to Dick about the bonding of the Morse School project, both the state share and the local share of that project. And Dick has come back to us with a proposal, and a couple of recommendations, and one is, I'll just touch on two of them, one is that we do a negotiated sale of the bonds as opposed to a competitive sale, so he's going to work with an underwriter from Connecticut. The advantage of that, it costs us a little bit more, but the advantage is that we can control the specifics on refunding, and couponing, and things like that, if you do it through a negotiated sale as opposed to a competitive sale, when you're really at the mercy of whoever bids on the, to purchase the bonds. The second recommendation that, and I think the committee has, by consensus feels that that is the appropriate way to go, so we will recommend that we do a negotiated sale of those bonds. And the second item that Dick has recommended, as you may remember, with our, with the bond renovation of Morse, I think we delayed principal or interest payment, didn't we? We delayed it for a year? No? For the $5 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, we delayed it to time when other debt service would be retired. But Dick's recommendation here is that we begin interest payments on the bond as soon as possible, so, and I think we agree with him on that. I mean, there's no real reason to delay interest payments in this instance, it saves us a little bit of money over the time, over the period of the bond, obviously, because you're paying a little bit less interest, because you're being more aggressive in meeting those payment requirements. So we are, we would recommend, again, by consensus, the committee agreed with Dick, and we would recommend to the board that, you know, we take, we take his lead on this, and that we begin, we factor in interest payments on the, on the local share of the bond in the 2020, in this budget, really, in the 19, the budget that we're adopting is going to reflect interest payments on the new high school project. So I don't, I think, I think when we actually go out to issue the bonds, that will come to the board for a vote, right? I think so.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Yeah, maybe not. But anyways, those are the recommendations from Dick, and the committee agrees with those recommendations. I guess if there are any concerns among the board members, you can think about it, we're not, we're not going out yet, but we will be, we will be shortly, May, I think, is what Dick recommends, and if you have any concerns about that, let's talk about them. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the facilities committee is alive and well. The committee went on the road, took a trip this past month to the Fisher Mitchell School. There had been an expressed concern that perhaps it was overcrowded, so we went to look at the facility, the area around it where it has been recommended that we do some improvements this year, and take a look at the utilization of space. So Dave Richards and Ross Berkowitz were kind enough to spend a couple hours with us, we walked the tour, took a look at the utilization of the various spaces in the school. You know, and Fisher Mitchell's not ideal, we all recognize the fact that we need some new bricks and mortar over there, and we've asked the state to put us on the list. But I think that the leadership there and the staff there have done an excellent job in utilizing the space that they do have in a very constructive way for their special aid programs and for the regular ed classes. You know, there are problems there, they'd love to have a new cafeteria, but someday they will, and I hope we're all around to see it in the not-too-distant future. In conjunction with that, Dave Richards has suggested, and I don't see any action to take tonight, but for future reference and to take a look at, starting to get a community committee together to start talking about the Bath Elementary Schools. And no big-time specific planning, but start taking a look at what we've got, what we think we might need, and be prepared, like if the call comes again from the state as it did with Morse, we'll at least have some of a blueprint to move forward with. So that's a recommendation that Dave has made, and I think it's an appropriate one, both Ellen and I feel that, let's take a look at that, get our elementary parents and some of our faculty members to start talking about what they'd like to see in the future. The other thing, and I asked, I asked Patrick about it, whether I should bring it up in the context of facilities, and I guess I will. There has been a request to move forward utilizing capital improvement funds, to do some major work at Dyk Newell with some heating pipes and so forth that need to be addressed, they're leaking, $128,000, $129,000, and some conversion of the heating system there, which needs to be ongoing, has some work has been done. The middle school here is slated to move towards gas, from oil to gas, which will be a long-range savings for us, but it will require funding to do those things necessary, to convert from oil burners to gas, and to bring our current heating system online with a gas system. Gas companies agreed to bring the line in here free of charge, so that part of it is pretty good, and that project's like $88,000. Again, we're talking about the capital improvement funds that exist within the context of our budget, our existing money. Then Phippsburg, we talked last year about doing an overhaul of the gymnasium floor at the facility in Phippsburg, and it's time to move forward. It's kind of, it's starting to deteriorate, and the current floor was put in over an asbestos floor. So the cost down there will not just be to put in a new floor, but to abate the asbestos subsurface in the gym. And that, that project would be $53,000. So we, the committee is recommending to the board that we spend $275,000 from our existing capital improvement funds, with the knowledge that that will leave us with $75,000 from the existing fund, and we'll be appropriating, as we do year to year, an additional $50,000 to go into that fund. So we should end up with $125,000, which would be enough to meet any contingency that might occur during the next school year, and at the same time, we can make these improvements from capital without it affecting the overall budget. So that's our recommendation, Ellen, it was fun being over there, the kids were excited about being in school, it was a real up day, one of those few sunny days we had, and it made it even better. Any questions? Thanks, Ellen. Okay, that's, we are alive and well.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks, Bill. We do, we do have, under new business, we have a discussion of what Bill just included as part of his committee report, so we'll revisit that shortly. Okay, 9.0, student representative reports, anything you guys want to say?
Just to reiterate the previous presentation about unified basketball, they ended their season very strongly, and more importantly, every year that they've been running, they've brought a lot of pride to, I would say, the greater Morse community. In addition to that, spring sports started out with a bang, I believe every spring sport is in some sort of practice, whether it's inside or outside, and I'm very excited because I'm on the tennis team, and that's the only sport that I play during the school year.
I have laryngitis right now, so this is fun.
Sydney can't talk.
Yeah, it's just, it's been really good, we had a one-axe finish-up, and they did pretty well. We just had a couple students go to the Maine State Science Fair, which was really fun. And yeah, spring sports are underway, we had our, we had a wonderful winter sports awards night, which went really well, and just excited for the new season.
Do you want to sing a song while you...
That would be terrible, oh my gosh.
I won't even ask how you lost your voice, but, do you know, I don't want to depend on you, but the students that went to the science fair, you know what...
So she's actually in our AP, in mine and Hayden's AP environmental science class. She went for, what is she?
She, her project was examining the efficacy of synthetic and organic antibacterial-like properties, so she did something with E. coli bacteria and B. cereus bacteria, and she used substances, I believe, such as cayenne pepper, manuka, honey, I think she used garlic like oil, I'm not 100% what all of the substances she used, but she wanted to show, or at least examine, the different rates of antibacterial properties of household items.
That's great, that's great.
And this student was Elizabeth Shaw, and I don't know if that was mentioned, or not.
I don't think it was.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks. Okay, item 10.0, superintendent's report, Patrick?
I just wanted to let you know, I think it was two weeks ago, we had 18 students go to Skills USA competition, which is the most we've had in many years, and did very well. I'll just want to list off some of the awards, employment application process, Jalen Coleman from Morse, gold medal, auto tool ID, Damon Crummett... Auto tool ID, Damon Crummett from Lincoln Academy, gold medal. Medical terminology, Haley Wills, Willis, I'm sorry, from Morse, gold. Architectural drafting, Austin Teal from Lincoln Academy, silver. Prepared speech, Emma Boynton from Morse, silver. Carpentry knowledge, Amber Mixon from Morse, silver. Courtesy Corps, Samantha Ramsey from Morse, bronze. Carpentry knowledge, Justin Stewart from Morse, bronze. And first aid CPR, Naomi Cummings from Morse, bronze. Odyssey of the Mind, we had all three Bath Middle School teams, and one of the Fisher Mitchell teams took first place honors at the Challenge Regional Odyssey of the Mind Competition. Next up will be the state competition Saturday, April sixth, at Bedford High School. And as you know, in the backup tonight, we have, just in case they make the worlds, that we hopefully will get you to approve that tonight. One of our teachers, Lawrence Kovacs, was recently recognized by the Bicycle Coalition of Maine and also the Maine Recreation Parks Association for his work promoting cycling in the RSU and in the community. The pump track at BMS was also recognized as a project of note by the Maine Recreation and Parks Association, so thank you to Lawrence for all his work. Last Thursday evening, we had the Battle of the Books, our annual academic competition that packs the gym. This time it was at Woolwich, very well attended, and it's just a fun and exciting evening to watch students get so excited about learning, and, and again, a fun academic competition. And lastly, congrats to Haley and Olivia Harper, both swimmers at Morse that received all-state recognition in the Portland Press Herald this past weekend. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Patrick. Any questions, Patrick? No? Deborah? Finance?
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Okay, so tonight in your packet, you're looking at the month ending February twenty-eighth. This is the end of the eighth month, so we have four months to go. And from our thirty-million-dollar budget, we have spent close to eighteen million, which is about fifty-nine percent. We have about nine and a half million encumbered for salary and benefits, and so at that point in time, it shows approximately three million dollars left, but, you know, we know that won't happen, because that's all the other spending that will take place. I received notification from the state on our final main care seed reduction for my subsidy, and it was thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's the last reduction for this year. So the total for the, the annual total is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars. So that is well within what we had planned in our budget, so that's a, a good thing. Our revenue, we've brought in twenty million dollars, so we have ten million more to go. That's about sixty-seven percent, and we expect to have a positive balance again at the end of the year, probably similar to what we had this year, and I think everything, we're in a good place.
Great, thanks, thanks, Deb. Any questions? Deb? No? Thank you. Okay, eleven point oh, old business. Eleven point one is the review of board goals, and I think we are doing quite well in, in meeting, in meeting our, the goals that we set for ourselves. Goal four deals with the review and, and update on Schedule B positions, and Patrick has been working with, has been working on that, and, and perhaps, if, if they're ready, we may have, we will have a presentation at our April meeting on, on the Schedule B analysis that might be as scheduled as a workshop before the meeting, or it might be during the me, or, you know, as an agenda item of the meeting, but we'll, we'll certainly let you know on that. Okay, a couple of action items. Eleven point two, second reading of policy JC, transgender and gender expansive students' guidelines. Do I have a motion to approve these guidelines? Do I have a motion by Lou, second by Megan? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you. And the second reading is for policy JJIAB, Extracurricular Activity Participation Regulation. And again, this is an action item. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alan, second, second by Bill. Any discussion? I think we've talked this one pretty much to death, I think. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you. All right, new business. Twelve point oh, I'm, I'm going to, having suggested that we, we deal with the music, musical performance proposal, or theater performance proposal, as twelve point seven, I'm going to suggest we push it up and, and deal with it. Twelve point oh five, I guess. We'll take it as a first item under new business. Did everyone get a hard copy of the proposal? Yep, okay. Eric? No?
Sandy Foreman, teaching at Morse. All kinds of choral things, guitar, piano, some unified kids, which is really exciting. But now I'm going to talk to you about a musical theater performance class. The idea here is that if you, we have a whole, since I've arrived at Morse, which was about five or six years ago, students have asked repeatedly about doing a musical in a big sense. That's been a very, that's been a topic every year. Students, when it's mentioned at all, get extremely excited. So I started thinking and researching at some other schools in the area, in Maine, and in our, in the United States. There are many, many schools who have an actual semester class, that's a musical theater performance class. Now, the idea here isn't to just put on a big, like, it's not going to be choose one show and do it across that semester, but in this case, it would be like if I have fifteen, twenty students sign up, in the first week or so, I would get a sense, what are their voices, what are their strengths? And then I would go into the musical history, you know, repertoire, and pick the best songs for them as a group, for them as individuals, for small, small groups, and that we, what we would do is do sort of a, a thea- musical theater history performance class, looking at the history, looking at being, critiquing performances. How I feel like it relates is the, it, it clearly is a musical class, but it also will be related to theater, creating a character, speech. It'll have a lot to do with, you know, learning to be a good speaker, be, with performance skills of movement, and how to create a mood with your song and your character. So it goes a little beyond what we do now in concert choir, which is to look at all kinds of literature across time that's more classical and jazz and folk and, and African-American spirituals. And this would be really more focused on creating musical theater characters and, and small scenes. And if you have that thing in front of you, I mean, it hits a ton of the standards. It even, I'm hoping to include some movement, maybe not full-on tap dancing like Riverdance or something, but, you know, having, having some kind of, you know, easier movement where a student who's coming in, you know, could certainly be included in a large ensemble, definitely some large ensemble. And we'll have a, a night at the end of the semester where they will get to perform in a, you know, a performance class, such as the rock band does now. They have a, a night of performance. Clearly, kids are really excited about it. They're, they've been excited for years, and I finally decided that this could maybe work and get a lot of kids who, who are interested in a classroom and really learning how to analyze and create and perform, and not just kind of think, what is musical theater? Are there any questions, or do you want to include anything? Any questions for you?
Yep.
Hi, this sounds great. So just so I'm clear, how is this, because we were talking about the actual having a mu- doing a musical as well, correct?
Yes.
So is this part and parcel, or?
They're not necessarily one in the same.
Right.
We, we had a couple priorities in looking at the, the budget and whether we could add to music, and I think our number-one priority was to move towards having a musical, which would not be what we just, we just heard as an explanation. It would be an extracurricular activity supported by stipend and, and other funding to get off the ground, and that would be something that more students would be able to participate in than a music theater class that would be a singleton in their schedule that they could, may or may not be able to schedule. This would add to our opportunities for, basically for electives in having something in the day to foster that support, maybe build momentum towards, towards the musical. We offer it when we had sign-ups that, that, that support it.
So we're still looking at both, though? I mean, this is?
Yeah, with, with the musical, after-school musical being the priority, and, and this being secondary. Now, if we, the reason we're bringing this to the board is because we, we bring courses to the board, and this would be, this would be a course change, and even an opportunity, a potential that we would be able to fit this into our schedule without increasing our teaching staff amount of hours. We still would have this kind of in our, our course book, if we were able to fill it over another course that we offer now, then potentially we could add that with, with your approval.
I think it's a great idea.
The budget does include some monies, the recommendation is for some additional funding for music at Morse, right?
Yeah, and this is why it's a little, you know, a little confusing, is my understanding is this is going to be a course offering. If we have sign-ups, it will alternate with maybe something different, so Sandy's time is not, we're not proposing to increase her time at this point. When we talked about it with the finance committee a little bit, that last meeting we had, as Eric just talked about, the priority was to look at using that fifteen thousand, which we'll get to when we talk about the budget, for trying to get a musical off the ground, more of an after-school type of thing, and also using some of that money to get, you know, to buy resources, supplies, equipment to prepare for that. So this class obviously fits it nicely, because there may be a group of students that really get that exposure experience that will then participate in a musical after-school in the evenings. So that's kind of, the priority was more the musical and the resources to support the musical that we can hopefully get off the ground.
When, when Eric brought this to us, I made sure to say that clearly it would be wonderful to be a hundred percent and be able to include this as another class, but I really want the, the outside-of-school stipend musical to take place before even this, you know, what I'm saying is this would be lovely to add along with the other classes I have, maybe take the place of a class I do now. But definitely, I'm on board with the idea of the full after-school stipend musical, because it just includes so many more children, so many more, so, so much more excitement about pulling that together.
Would this take over the spot of One Axe? Because usually, like, it's, you have this, this, the fall show, and then the spring musical, so will this take over One Axe?
I can't completely speak from a story, but the last time we talked was, which was just a few days ago, he made it sound like that if a musical is going to take place, he would not get rid of One Axe, but it would be the fall play.
Oh.
So the One Axe would still go on as, as tradition, tradition, unusual, yes. So that would keep going, and it would be the fall play. I think the thought in the future is to make this an every-other-year experience was what we kind of thought might work, in that it is a big production. It's, you know, it's, to get it started feels bigger than when it's going, because then you have the funds that, you know, roll over, that kind of thing.
So you're saying if, so it could be like a fall play one year, the musical the next year, so there'd be a performance, it just would alternate as two?
Correct.
Yeah, no?
I believe that was what we thought would fly.
Or it's one possible scenario.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, yeah, not holding you to it.
Yes. Some schools do it every year, some schools do it every other, so that students have a chance to be in two productions in their high school years.
Which is different than what you're proposing here, which is a course.
They kind of were intercolliding, because...
Well, they're aligned, but, but they're different, but they're, but they're separate.
So many students have been excited about musical theater that I kind of, before I thought we could maybe do a full musical, I thought maybe we could offer at least some sort of course that they could be exposed and have a chance to perform and all of that, and then the musical sort of rolled right along with it.
Great.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
So any questions, young Bill?
I, I would like the privilege of, of making the motion to approve the establishment of this course. I had two daughters that studied musicals. One of them graduated from Emerson, and is a drama ed folk, and if I didn't make this motion and vote to approve, I'd have a problem this summer when they come to visit.
That's right. You would be disinvited, wouldn't you?
Just one, one quick little story. They, they had a great experience, wonderful. As you see, one of them went on to, to study.
Make, make the motion first, we'll get a second, then we'll discuss. All right, we need a second.
Make approval.
Bill makes the motion, second by Lou. Okay, now we'll discuss.
Second by Lou. The, the only other thing, a little, little story, I was the football coach at the school, about the same size as Morse, about six hundred students. They had two a year, and they more than paid for themselves, they turned a profit, just so that you keep that in the back of your mind, because it can happen. The other thing was, as the football coach, I would lose twelve of my boys' early dismissal from practice, because they became the dance chorus for, for West Side Story.
Oh, yes. There's nothing better than a jet and a, you know, you know?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion, any other questions of Sandy, or Eric, or Bill with his stories? No? Okay. So the motion then essentially is to add musical theater performance as a semester course at Morse. So all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's wonderful. The kids will be thrilled.
Okay, twelve point one, personnel items. We have a couple resignations, or resignation and retirement.
Yeah, one resignation, Callie Wells, first grade teacher at Phippsburg, and I'd like to thank her, she's in her second year. And then also, we have a retirement, Betsy Lane, who's a secretary at Woolwich, who's been with us for nineteen years.
Thanks, Patrick. Twelve point two, first reading of the budget, and again, this is Patrick's recommendation to us as a board regarding the budget, and I'll pass it over to him, Patrick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief, and I, again, I thank everybody that gave up two mornings. I mean, Lorna's already been thanked, but Ben Chabuck, who's also a community member, was there for both mornings, and so I know it takes a lot of time and effort, but it seems to, to work for us. But we did look at the budget through three lenses this year. One was just level services, which means trying to keep the same programs that we have now, changing demands, which really had a lot to do with ESL as well as special education, and then our strategic plan, district educational plan, trying to get something to make progress in that area. So we tried to look at it again through those three lenses. Important to note that we did receive six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand more in state subsidy than we did last year, which is important. And as Steve mentioned, though, one payment that we do have to, or we will make this coming year is the two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, which is the interest payment for the Morse CTE. So that is in this budget. What is being proposed to be added at this point right now, and I'll just go through this list, is an additional two days of ESL, or English as a second language. Right now, it's a point six, and we're going to a one-point-oh FTE, and the, and the reason for that is purely numbers. Our numbers of ELL students have doubled since last year, so we need to service those students. Outdoor classroom position at Phippsburg Elementary School, we had funding for that from an outside source this current year, and we've built that into the outdoor classroom is fifteen thousand. What we were just speaking about is, we're calling it enhancing the Morse music program, and looking at the possibility of a musical stipend, and also the supplies, which would be about fifteen thousand to, to start that up, which again, would be that after-school piece, nothing to do with that class that she's talking about tonight. Ed tech at Dyke Newell and BMS, both in the special education department, so that's two positions for ninety thousand. Additional funds for substitutes, it's, Deb has a number in the budget, and we've exceeded that the last couple of years, so it's really just trying to project what we actually spend. And then the last thing, which was part of our strategic plan, was trying to find some help in the area of communications, PR, and so we have some money in there for a part-time, let it be equivalent of one day a week, but for a part-time communications position. So that's what's, and the last piece, which is a big chunk of money, is the literacy materials for K-25 reading curriculum, which is around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand, but it's a much-needed program. We have the Fontis and Pennell, you know, assessments, and we have, but we haven't had an upgrade on our guided reading kits in a long time in this district. So that is something that will allow Katie to work with our K-25 teachers across the district, and purchase all of those reading materials all at one time, so we don't have to share materials. So what does this all mean? The bottom line is, it's a two percent increase on the overall local contribution, which results in the following distribution by town. Rousek would be a negative ten point three, Bath would be a two point five four increase, Phippsburg would be a negative point oh three percent, and Woolwich would be three point seven percent. And again, Deb gave me some detail today that looked at our student population K-12 over the last several years, and, you know, Woolwich is the only community that is growing when we talk about pre-K-12 students. And so it doesn't just mean students physically at the K-8 school at Woolwich, it's throughout the whole district, and they grew by eight, was it eight last year, and eight again this year. And so, you know, I'm not saying that's the only reason that their increase is, you know, the highest out of the, the communities, but that does play, obviously play a factor. All the other three towns have, have decreases in student population. So I'll stop there, and, I mean, you have your cover sheet, and then you have the backup, and so I know tonight is really a first reading, and then let you digest it, and kind of start with questions next Monday, but I don't know if anybody else from the finance committee would like to, you know, add anything?
I, I would, I would just add, if you look, you know, the total increase in the budget is, year to year, is about twelve percent. And, and that might be the number you see kicked out there, but that includes the, the debt, most of that is debt service, and, and it reflects state subsidized debt service, as well as what we're paying for local, which, which we have to absorb. If you, if you look at the green box over, over on the, on the right-hand side, Deb or, or Patrick have, have taken a look at that increase, minus the high school and BRTC. So the budget, you know, again, minus that debt service and those CTE payments, is, is about four point four percent, which is a, I think, when, when the public, you know, sees the number, I know, I noticed for SED seventy-five, the, you know, the Times Record reported the pay, the, the total number, you know, their, their budget went up about ten percent, for example. But again, a large, a large portion of that is debt service. And so you might run into folks who have seen, you know, who will see this, this larger percentage increase, but again, just, just to, just to remember that, that a significant amount of that, one point three million of that, represents debt service, of that increase represents debt service, and our, our actual increase is, is about four point four percent year to year. Okay, any, any questions of Patrick, or Deb, at this point, or the finance committee? And again, just back to the, to the town numbers, as you recall, I mean, our, our proportion among the towns is based on a, a per student, a per student cost, so it's very, it's not, it's not the only reason the numbers fluctuate, but it's extremely sensitive to those, those census numbers that Patrick mentioned. And, and Woolwich is the community adding students to our, to our overall population, which is a good thing, but, but it just, it means, you know, there's, there's an additional burden that falls to the, the town. Any questions, any other questions, you know, as you have a chance to go through these sheets, feel free to call Deb, call Patrick, call a member of the finance committee, we can, we can start to explain them a little bit. The, the presentation on, next Monday's presentation, the first public forum, will again be Patrick's presentation of the budget, and, and there's opportunity there for the board, as well as for the community, to ask questions on the detail of the budget, so. Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. Okay, item twelve point three, we have been talking about, and we've, we've spent a year in merger with Merrimah Meeting Adult Education, blending our adult programs with theirs, and I, I'll let Patrick speak to this, but I think, at least the general, certainly the sense I have, and, and perhaps the general sense of board, is that it's been a successful, it's been a successful year, they've, they've added some adult offerings, which were not previously available, just when the RSH ran the program itself. I, I personally haven't heard any issues in terms of arise, in terms of access to the program. I mean, one thing we, we were pretty clear about is that particularly for our adult population, trying to get a high school equivalency, that high set exam, that they not lose that accessibility if, if the program is, if, if the manager of the program is, is down in, down in tops, as opposed to being here in Bath. And I think those, those offerings have been available up here in Bath, and, and I certainly have, have not heard of any, any folks who've been, who have been closed out of programs because, because they weren't readily available. There is a, I can't remember, there is a transportation issue, isn't there? No? Nope, okay, that, that must be, must be another conversation. So we're at, we're at a point, I think, of, of either asking more questions of Patrick, and, and we can get the program manager back in, if you feel that that's necessary. If not, I'd, I'd like to think that, that as far as the Merrimah Meeting Adult Experiment, or, that it's been successful for us, and that we move forward and, and agree to, to join that, that consortium, or collaboration with Merrimah Meeting Adult Education, which would make this an action item, as opposed to just a discussion, so. Do people feel that, or you want to keep discussing this, or?
I'm ready to accept the merger.
Okay, we have a motion by Lou, second by Bill. Any, any further discussion on that? If not, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay. So Patrick, you'll enter into an agreement, a formal agreement with them?
Yeah, we've got to work that out, yeah, that's what we'll do next.
And it'll come back to the board to approve the agreement, I think.
Yes.
Yep, yep, okay, great. Twelve point four is a discussion of the capital improvement funds for the FY twenty projects, which, which Bill outlined. I, if, if possible, I'd like to not make this an action item at this point, in, in part because much of this is embedded in the budget. We will need a separate board vote to approve these projects, but, but there is, the budget, the budgetary pieces of this are the replacement of these dollars into the capital reserve, you know, and, and so Patrick has indicated, it's not, it's not critical at this meeting that we, that we approve these. Probably at the next meeting, certainly before summer, we'll, we'll, we'll approve them, but...
Because it's gonna be in the summer, I mean, what's the timeline? As long as we do it by May? I mean, what's your...
Yeah, I would say, you know, ideally, the, the April, maybe the April board meeting, you know, May at the latest.
Is April ideal?
Yeah, April would be ideal, because we're close to a second reading for the budget. I think we would, should know by then whether there's a board member that would like to, you know, pull something off that list, and put it into the regular budget, or, you know, not put as much in the, you know, the capital reserve, because we can't afford to. So I just think we, you know, because the budget's a fluid process, we should, we should just give it a little bit more time, that's all. And Dave, you know, Dave's done some investigating, and starting to talk to companies, hopefully to get costs and everything, that hopefully it'll be approved at some point.
So we're, we're not going to take this as an action item at this point, but do, take a look at the projects, and see whether they meet your priorities for how these dollars should be spent. And remember, this is, I, you know, it's called here a capital improvement, but this is our capital reserve. These are the monies that, that every year we set aside to deal with, you know, a heating system disaster in the middle of winter. So it, it shouldn't be a, it shouldn't be a, a decision that we make lightly, I mean, it has to be in, in consideration of what you think a sufficient amount in capital reserve is. The proposal, as, as Bill outlined it, and as we've talked about at the finance committee, is that there would still be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in that capital reserve to deal with any building-related emergencies that come up during the year. And, and I'm, I'm going to assume the, the facilities committee and the finance committee both feel that that's, that that's adequate. And, and as Bill noted again, it allows us to, it would allow us to do these projects, but essentially to move them off budget, rather than funding them through the, through the budget. We have these monies in a dedicated fund, and we could, we could use them for this purpose. This, we would vote on these as a separate, as a separate item at the April meeting, so. Okay, thanks. Or I should say, any, you know, if there's any, again, any discussion of these, any additional clarification you need, talk to Patrick, talk to Dave, however, or give Bill a call, however you need to get that information, so. Okay, thank you. So we have a couple of field trip requests, item twelve point six. So item twelve point six A is a field trip to Boston for Fisher Mitchell, Fisher Mitchell fifth graders, and this is a Freedom Trail and the Tea Party Museum. We have a motion by Lou to approve, second by Megan. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thanks. And the second request deals with, we're already planning to go to East Lansing, Michigan with our Odyssey of the Mines team, so. Do I have a motion to approve those requests? Motion by Lou, second by Megan. All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. There's been the last year.
That's true.
So. Get a direct flight to Detroit.
They don't say how they're going to get there.
They'll fly.
They'll fly, they'll fly. Okay, thank you. Thirteen point oh, our second public session, anybody in the public wants to address the board about any item that you, that you care to? If not, no, thank you. Fourteen point oh, next meeting dates and locations. So again, just to remind everybody, and remind the, the general public, we have a public forum to discuss the FY twenty school budget, Monday, April first, a week from tonight, at, right here, at Bath Middle School, six o'clock, and we hope to get as much participation as we can during that meeting. And fourteen point two, our next regular meeting is Monday, April twenty-second, here at Bath Middle School, at six o'clock. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Bill, second by Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thanks. Thanks, everybody.